We have a long agenda tonight, so let's try to get started. This is going to take all of my powers and persuasion to keep this meeting short. If I get to talking too fast, somebody wave your hands and we'll slow down. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Gillum?
Here.
Harrod?
Here.
Finley?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Please stand me and join in the invocation. Let us pray. Almighty God, we come before you this evening with Thanksgiving in our hearts for all the blessings that you have given us. Lord, we live in a great city and we pray that you'll be with us tonight as we go about doing the business of our city and the things that we do be pleasing unto you. Lead, guide, and direct us as we go from here. Lord, we pray a special request for our utilities director, Stephen Elms. We pray for continued healing for him, Lord, and we hope that he would be able to come back and join us really soon. As we leave here, be with us, guide us, keep us safe. We'll give you the praise and the glory. Amen. Thank you, Don. Join me in flag salute, taking position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would consider a motion to approve the consent agenda. We need to pull items H4 and H6. So would consider a motion absent items 4 and 6.
And could we also have a little bit of discussion on the H, I guess, the Community Service Review Committee?
Sure. So we'll pull H in its entirety? Or is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Maybe we progress the item.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Shaw. Call the question.
I'm still confused on what we just pulled.
We pulled all of H.
Okay. 4 and 6 were under H.
Yeah. 4 and 6 were already under H. Yes. Motion carries 7-0. Commissioner Shaw wanted to discuss item H.
Okay, Justin, if you would, please educate me on the origination of the Community Service Contract Review Committee. Whether it has actually been formally approved by this commission or not is what my question is.
The committee is not codified. It has been established, Commissioner Gillum during his first tenure was on the commission when it was established, so it would be approximately 16, 20 years ago.
Probably beyond that. I've been off the commission 16. It was up prior to that, so it's probably been almost 20 years ago.
It's not a new entity, ma'am. So I do not know the exact origin or how it was formed, if it was officially by resolution of the City Commission. Do you know, Phil?
It was a resolution.
Okay. So it was by a resolution of the City Commission.
Okay. All right. And this is a standing committee that has certain individuals on it. Is that my understanding?
Yes, ma'am.
Each time? Okay. All right. And could you please pull that resolution for me, City Clerk?
Are there any other questions or discussions regarding the general makeup, content, origin, et cetera, of the Contract Review Committee? Seeing none, we'll move along to item 4. I was asked to pull item 4, the recommendation of $60,000. We were notified by Action that they had an error in their request and they had written $60,000 in the body of their request. But if you add up the numbers that they put in there individually, it's $66,000. So the correct number is $66,000. So the chair would move that we approve item 4 at an amount of $66,000 instead of $60,000.
Second motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Is there any further discussion?
Will that contract language be revised?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mayor, could you educate me? Are we voting on all of 4? I mean, all of H now or just on 4?
We're voting on all of 4.
Did I... All of 4, H4 or not?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's vote that one more time.
You zeroed this out.
I did. I'm sorry.
One more time. There you go. Motion carries 7-0. Do we need to approve all of the rest of the items under H?
Yes.
I dash the item, H, what was it, 6. 6 be voted for. We can vote on all of them except H6.
Can we approve?
So there's a motion?
Can we approve all of them except for 4 and 6?
Well, you've already taken action on 4.
Right.
So there was a motion to defer H6. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So if there's a second to that and that's voted on, then you could vote.
Motion by Commissioner Harrod. Who is the second? Commissioner Bouchon. Is there any discussion? Call the question.
City Clerk, could you read back the...
Which one would you read?
That what we're... Action we're taking.
A motion to approve H6.
I think we're deferring item... We're deferring item 6.
This is deferring it till the next meeting.
Any other questions or discussion? Call the question. Motion carries 7-0.
I move we approve the remainder of items in the consent agenda under H.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Is there any further discussion? Call the question. Motion carries 6-1. Six ayes, one no. Citizens' participation. We have a three-minute limit per person and a 12-minute limit per topic. If you would like to speak, you may approach the podium and tell us who you are and sign in and speak your piece. It's better be important we have a long agenda.
Trying to write very quickly. I'm Holly Gordon and I work here in Shawnee.
Who are you again?
Holly Gordon. Thank you, Commissioner. Trail Days is coming up downtown. I don't know how many of you will be in attendance, but starting June 16th, that is Friday evening, we're going to kick off with a Friday event, that third Friday, on Main Street. It is Trail Days that weekend. The community dinner is that evening, beginning about 6 o'clock, so please come and enjoy. And there will be many, many things to do. So there, straight to the point.
Thanks, Holly. Holly is one of our more participating residents. We appreciate that. Item 3, presentation by Michelle Briggs, President/CEO of Avitas Foundation regarding a matching grant for recreation.
I'm Michelle Briggs with the Avitas Foundation. On behalf of the Board of Directors of Avitas, we would like to pledge a $10,000 grant, a matching grant for swimming lessons for the children at Shawnee Splash.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mayor, if you please, as the commission, we have Carrie Costa from the City of Shawnee in the audience, and she is the Parks and Recreation Manager. She's just going to briefly comment on how we utilize these funds from the Avitas Foundation, which we're so grateful for, and just elaborate a little further on how this is going to benefit the community. Thank you, Carrie.
Perfect. Go ahead.
We're super blessed. Thank you very much. Huge blessing for the kiddos and family of Shawnee with this grant. We've had it every year since we've been in existence with the Splash. What that's going to do is that's going to allow our low-income families to come to the park, bring their children, for them to learn to swim, so they can take that skill of them and use it the rest of their lives. So it's going to make a huge impact on our community and all these kids as they grow up. Water safety is very important to me. It's very important to a lot of families. So doing that, certainly also we have a great lead director of our swim lesson program. She's been doing it for over 20 years. She's really gotten our program on its feet. We've got some very interested high school kids who have become certified, who'll be part of this program. So we'll be equipped to have enough instructors to hold all these kiddos that are going to be coming to the park. So we're real excited.
Swimming can certainly be a life-saving virtue, by the way.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Another thing that I really like about this, and we won't see the fruits of labor for several years, but my dream is to have these kids come in, learn swim lessons, come up through the Splash, play at the Splash for several years, be part of the swim lesson program, all the way through competitive swimming, work their way up to our junior lifeguarding program. We have a junior lifeguarding program as well during the mornings that the Splash is open during lessons. And this teaches the kids when they get into their teen years before they're able to become a lifeguard, they become junior lifeguards, and they learn how to be a lifeguard. Then Red Cross will then certify them when they're 16, and then we'll hire them at the Splash, and they'll be part of our almost 60 kids staff to run our park during the summer. So from there, they become a lifeguard. After they gain experience, then they would become a head guard, then promote to supervisor. And we actually have our first young lady, her name's Tiffany Gardner. She's an OB/UC student right now. She actually came to the Splash the very first year we were open. She started as a lifeguard. Last year she was head guard, and this year she's a supervisor. So it's really great for us and the city also for safety. Already having somebody that is very familiar with the facility makes our training hours go way down. And of course, if they're that many years, they love it. So and they get to know the kids that come and play during the day. So the program is just from baby all the way up through college age until they're done wanting to be a lifeguard. So it's really great. It's really great.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. You guys have any questions? Feel free to give us a call. Our pool number is 273-0700. And we have a brand-new software that we're kicking off with the Recreation Department as well as the Parks Department. Once you make an account on our online system, you can rent things at the community center, auditorium, all of our season pass members at the Splash, and on and on. So we'll make some votes and all these different things. We haven't gotten all of started yet, but we're real excited to get that off its feet as well. Check us out on our website, shawneok.org/splash, and you can get signed up for stuff that we got going on.
Slash Splash.
Slash Splash.
Say that fast.
It's a mouthful.
Thank you.
But that's where you can go to get signed up for swim lessons or whatever else we got going on at the Splash. So thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. And thanks again to Avitas. And also thank you to the Salvation Army who is helping us administer this program. In previous years, it was done with a Dollar Day, and Avitas sponsored that, and the lines became somewhat unwieldy. So we've gone to the Salvation Army to help us administer, help us identify the low-income kids without embarrassment or identification to them so that they can take advantage of the program. So thanks again to Avitas. Item 4, presentation by Junior Service League of Shawnee regarding wayfinding sponsorship.
Just going to introduce the Junior Service League members that are here. Mr. Mayor, we have Katie Cannon. She's the current president of the Junior Service League. Kellyanne Rollins, a past president, and Katie Ford, past president. Please come on up and... The microphone is yours.
Hello. JSL is happy to sponsor a gateway sign on Kickapoo's Burr, and this is in honor of our 75th anniversary of serving the Shawnee community. We look forward to many more years of service to the community.
Thank you so much for your sponsorship.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Presentation by Visit Shawnee, Inc. regarding wayfinding signage funding. Randy or Andor or Emily?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. On behalf of the Board of Visit Shawnee, Inc., we are very excited to be able to participate in the partnership for wayfinding. You know, a couple of years ago, we went through a wayfinding project. The City of Shawnee staff was very instrumental in helping with that. Justin, especially, as a board member of VSI, kind of carried the torch for that. Him and Ed Bolt were kind of the warriors. We came up with the brand that we say, and I appreciate you drinking our water there in front of you. Thanks for sharing with us. But the Visit Shawnee would like to offer, bring this check tonight in the amount of That will be our portion of the wayfinding. Some of them that have been on the CVB for years, it's kind of been a project long and happening, and so we're very, very excited to be able to bring this tonight. And somewhere, I'm not sure where, but somewhere Emily has a real check in the same amount.
Much smaller corporate group.
Thank you for having us to be here tonight.
Tendy?
I want to be brief. This is just one of the public hearings that we're doing. A presentation and the budget hearing will be done on July 19th when we adopt.
June 19th.
Hmm?
June 19th.
Our June... What did I say?
Said July.
Sorry. June 19th. And I just want to let you know that a summary was published in the newspaper last week. This is just estimates at this point, and we'll have a little bit more in-depth discussions. But if you have any questions or anything that needs to be changed in the budget you would like to see, please let me know this week because it takes a while to put all that summary and get it all ready for the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? I declare the public hearing open. If there is anyone here that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition? Public hearing is closed. And there's no further action, right? Counselor? Item 7, consideration of a resolution to adopt the Shawnee Strategic Plan.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner members, this is kind of an exciting culmination of a process that we've all been working diligently on for the last five months or so. Three of you, of course, Mayor Finley, Vice Mayor Harrod, and Commissioner Shaw, were part of a subcommittee that was established in January to work in earnest on a draft strategic plan. We then held four public forums to get additional feedback. Of course, we kicked it off really kind of unofficially in late 2016 with a community survey that went to 2,200 households and really helped inform the plan. So before you this evening, after much input and discussion and several presentations, which I think everyone was able to see, and so I'm not going to do a formal presentation tonight, but I believe that the draft plan before you this evening is at a place now where staff can and does recommend adoption. This plan sets forth a strategic mission, vision, set of core values, as well as a detailed action plan and a five-year capital improvement plan that will guide decision-making going forward. And we have functioned without a strategic plan to date. Sometimes I think we all wish that we had one, and so now this is an opportunity to put one in place and to be a guiding document for us for the next five years. And hopefully at that time, it's renewed and we can continue to have one in place because I think it's very much needed. I appreciate all of your time and effort. Those of you, all of you have been a part of this. Some of you, more than others, with your dedicated time commitment on the subcommittee. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, and thank you again.
Questions?
Justin, can you tell me how many comments that we did actually get overall from the community as input went from these four meetings?
Excellent question. The public forums were not heavily attended by the public. We did get some good comments back, but we didn't get an abundance of comments. That said, though, I did have people that asked for copies, that downloaded the information from our website. So there were other venues, of course, where people could provide comments. We got good feedback internally from city staff as we looked at the draft and made revisions. There were not substantial revisions, but there were, I think there were a few.
You also made the presentation to SEDF and had comments there, too.
Yes, yes, we did do that. We also, and I think part of that, I was somewhat discouraged by the attendance, but I thought about it more and looked at some processes that other cities had used. I think the fact that we kicked it off with that community survey, I think, helped a lot. You know, people felt like they had input already and that they may have reviewed the plan and realized that the plan kind of embedded that feedback already. And so I think had we not done that survey, I think we would have gotten, number one, I don't think the plan would be as good or representative, and number two, we probably would have gotten more feedback, but maybe it would have been a little harder to judge because it wouldn't have been kind of scientifically representative like that survey allowed us to be.
Kind of percentage. I'm trying to remember what the survey to get back.
About 20% response rate, sir.
Yeah, that's a good response. That's a good response.
I'd just like to congratulate the committee for doing a very difficult job and doing a good job at it at the same time. Congratulations.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Justin, I would like to say I appreciate what you and your staff did in regard to all of the effort of the strategic plan. I guess my concern is going to be a standing concern on this, and that's the fact that I don't believe we got enough input from our wards. And again, I think I stressed this before, that I would have liked to have had the meetings within the representative wards. And that was my reluctance for not attending any of these strategic planning meetings. I did not feel like they were representative of our area populations. And I will still say that I'm still very concerned that this does not represent all of our stakeholders that we needed at the table for this, even though it's a good plan and it's a good guide, I think.
As an outline, it certainly can be varied according to time, and perhaps we can find ways of getting further input in the areas you're talking about in the future. It's a document that evolves relatively as an outline, and for that reason, I think it would well have done. I understand where you're coming from, Don. I have some of those concerns.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, sir.
I echo those thoughts of Commissioner Shaw in terms of the input. I wish we had had more. I attended all of the forums, and I don't know that there weren't enough people there that I would say that they were representative. But what we have is a good document. It's got some tools in it that establish some objectives and some measurement devices. And I'd like to publicly thank Vice Mayor Harrod and Commissioner Shaw for the work that they did on this. When we had meetings, they came, they were prepared. You could tell that they had notes and they thought about it beforehand, and both of their input was very instrumental in arriving at what I think is a very good document, a great starting point. It's not a finished product, but it's a work-in-process, and if we don't put it on the shelf and forget about it, we'll be well-served by the effort of my fellow commissioners. So thank you all very much.
I move we adopt a strategic plan.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, seconded by... Who's second? Commissioner Gillum. Is there any further discussion? Call the question.
If may, Mr. Mayor. It's a short one, I'll be quick. A resolution approving and adopting the Shawnee Strategic Plan, 2017 to 2022.
Now call the question.
Justin, I'm just going to tell you that I will not be able to vote for this because I still have the concerns over the stakeholder representation in this.
With respect, ma'am, thank you.
Motion carries with six ayes and one nay.
Abstention.
Abstention, I'm sorry. Item 8, consider resolution approving renewal of certain lease agreement with Motorola
If we're going to approve it, are you going to come and put the tower down?
Yes, sir. No, they'll just take money. That check about as big as what VSI gave us. No. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Don Lynch, Burden Street Management Director. In July of 2013, the then-City Commission entered into a lease purchase agreement for upgrading our trunk-to-radio system, which included upgrades to our existing site here at Shawnee City Hall, a new north site to increase and improve coverage, and some upgrades to public safety radios that are in use today. The agreement was for 84 months with seven annual payments. The first year, we were given a pass, and so this will be the fourth payment that we'll be making on the system. And so as a housekeeping item, because we cannot obligate beyond one fiscal year, we have the language in the contract that if we don't renew after this year, then we have to pay the remainder of the balance. So what this resolution does tonight is renews that contract for another year, allows us to make the yearly payment, and we'll continue on down the road. Be happy to answer any questions you might have. Are there any questions? Thank you, Don.
Move we approve the contract.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Gillum.
Mr. Mayor, a resolution approving renewal of a certain lease agreement with Motorola Credit Corporation.
I lost the mouth.
Is there any further discussion?
Got to hang up on this one.
Call the question. Motion carries 7-0. Consideration of possible action on a resolution renewing a contract with AT&amp;T for telephone service. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a resolution for a contract that was signed on January 18th of this year with AT&amp;T. We moved to a new service provision to get telephone calls into our building and into our voice-over IP switch, which serves the Public Works Service Center and some other city facilities that we have network access to at this time. What that did in January was move us from the copper to a new fiber system that AT&amp;T's using. They're getting away from the copper entirely and wanting to move towards that. So that's why that agreement was signed. That agreement was a 36-month agreement. So again, not being able to obligate the commission beyond the fiscal year, we have a four-year resolution to continue that contract again for another year.
What you say, considering amount of money, I don't remember what it was.
We have, yes.
It was much, was expensive telephone service for, than it had been.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I move we approve the contract.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod that we approve the contract.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bouchon. Call...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution approving renewal of a certain service agreement with AT&amp;T Corporation.
Any further comments or questions? Call the question. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Thank you, Don. Item 10, discussion, consideration, possible action on Clint Latham's appeal of administrative order requiring demolition of the residential structure located at 703 South Pottinger. He has filed an appeal, and it's my understanding that there's an automatic stay that accompanies that. So, Justin, you're up.
So, Justin, you're up.
I don't know that we're required to take any action on this if there's an automatic stay.
What we're asking to do here is just move this to the very next commission meeting. Just to give the applicant time to be in town, he's currently way, sent a request this morning that we just move it for just a couple of weeks here. And honestly, a permit's been submitted for this property, and I'd rather see it get repaired than demoed. So I'm willing to definitely hear what he has to say about really what he wants to do with this particular property.
Thank you. Is there a motion to defer?
I move we defer.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaw. Any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Item 11, consideration of possible action to cancel the July 3, 2017 city commission meeting.
I'm assuming that city hall's gonna be closed on the 3rd since the 4th is on Tuesday. It's gonna be open.
It will be open, but we do generally cancel the first meeting in July. Of course, we've...
Did we cancel or reschedule?
No, just cancel. Just cancel.
Just have the one in July?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I guess I'm hesitant to make that kind of motion because, I mean, we have a huge agenda today and we're not clear what our agenda items will be like in July, so...
Right. And you know, because of our fiscal year ending June 30th, typically our two June meetings are the busiest meetings, and they're typically a little longer and kind of more stressful for staff to prepare for. And so part of the typical cancellation of the first meeting in July is also kind of a recognition that everybody's, we've all devoted extra time and effort in the last couple of months getting this stuff ready. And so Commissioner Shaw, you do bring up a good point, though, what if something came up? We could always call a special call meeting. I think probably we wouldn't be able to have a meeting on the 3rd anyway because of vacation schedules and many of you maybe have...
Well, we'll be closed on the 4th.
And we're closed on the 4th, so I think maybe a likely scenario would be if you choose to cancel this meeting, if we needed to do a special call, then we would maybe do it later in the week.
Should we change the verbiage of this to state the cancellation with amendment to call special meeting?
We inherently have the right to call a special meeting.
If that was a motion, I'll second it. How's that?
Oh, good. Thank you.
So do we have a motion and a second to cancel?
So moved.
Motion carries seven oh. Item 12, consider Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund lump sum payment from defined benefit plan for Rex Henin.
He's actually gonna do it, John.
He says.
Yep.
July 7, I think.
Huh?
July 7.
July the 7th.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Gillum. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Item 13, consideration of approval for correction to the final plat of Rolling Hills Edition, adjusting the location of a 20-foot easement, 20-foot utility easement. Case number S 11-16, application absentee Shawnee Housing Authority, originally considered and approved at the May 16, 2016 city commission meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Commissioners. The request you have for today is really very minor in scope. The utility easement is roughly 115 feet long by 20 feet, and there's one sanitary sewer existing line that's in that easement. And really what they're requesting to do is to move that south about 10 feet to fit into a common area utility easement and to allow more space to build a structure on a residential lot. They by accident on their final plat had basically put the full 20-foot on one side of a property line. So staff has no objection to this. It happens from time to time, and staff recommends approval.
Is there any questions of Justin?
And there's gonna be required construction to remove the existing waistline?
Yes, sir. Basically, with single-family houses, they tend to be about 60 feet wide, those lots. And when that's covered by 20 feet of utility easement rather than the typical 10 on both sides, it really cuts into the setback that they have to maintain for the house.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Commissioner Gillum. Third, second by Commissioner Rutherford. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Item 14, consider bids.
I'll jump up here on these two, Mayor. On item 14A, after additional review, staff would like to request deferment of this item until the June 19 meeting, please.
Is there a motion to defer or any questions of Justin?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Gillum to defer. Is there any discussion? Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Item 14B, Gateway and Park signage, contract number COS PW 1605.
Thank you. On item B, staff does recommend awarding the base bid to Randy Signs, which is the lowest and best bid at $144,000. 144,475, excuse me. I'd like to just talk about the funding just for a moment. We have $150,000 that was already budgeted for this item. In addition, you saw the two awards tonight, which we're grateful for from Visit Shawnee and Junior Service League. So we have approximately $225 in total to spend on wayfinding signage.
I might as well. Appreciate you.
The Junior Service League is sponsoring a half of a gateway sign. So that's about $8,200 or so. And so if you might recall, we went out for bid previously on wayfinding, and we didn't get any bids because we packaged it in one large project. So we split it up into two phases. So we're recommending an award tonight on this item, which will include the gateway signs and the park signs. And then with the sponsorships, we will roll that money into the new budget year. We'll have about $75,000 remaining. And this fall, we will look at a phase two in greater detail, look at specific locations where those directional and trailblazer signs can go and specific text. I know there's been some discussion on if we need all of them, if we need any of them at all. And so we're gonna kind of, as we kick off this first phase, we will work on that second phase and look at ways to trim some costs there as well. So are there any other questions?
So are we phasing one, we're doing phase one, phase two with different amounts? Or are we doing a total award amount today?
You are doing, you are doing an award tonight to Randy Signs for 144,475.
Okay.
And if and when we do a second phase, then we would bring that back to the commission for authorization for bidding.
Okay, so moved.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gillum. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Is there any new business?
No, sir, any business.
Commissioner comments?
I'd just like to give a thanks to city manager Harrison for submitting that email to us. I guess everybody got it about what Corporal Parsons did at the swimming pool, which kind of expresses his character and, you know, carrying on the, and that goes from the top down, from the chief down. I know all are, I know several of the police officers personally, and they're all, they're all worth their salt. And this is great that a citizen actually took the time to make something nice as opposed to dwelling on something that could have been, you know, that has been nasty or something. So I was really glad to read that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to mention the, what's going on at the Shawnee High School. If you've been to that parking lot in the last few years, you've had a few things to try to overcome to get through it. It's being totally redone right now. If you've driven by, you see all the work that's going on. It's a major reconstruction. So so many nice things are starting to happen. I've been to the baseball game recently, or one of the games, and the field looks beautiful out there, the fence, everything else. What was holding everything back, it seems like, was the frame on the picture. And that was that lousy parking lot, but it's being totally redone. We're also looking at perhaps adding some wind screens to the tennis court. By the way, the tennis facility is also a part of their project. So it's nice to see things, good things happen in Ward, too. It doesn't happen that often, but it's gonna be very nice.
Thank you.
I understand that contributions are being accepted for the wind screens on the tennis courts.
I'd like to, you know, say that, don't worry, I really appreciate all the work that Commissioner Shaw did on the strategic plan. Always prepared, like the mayor said, and she probably think went kind of above and beyond and was, I'm not that detailed myself, so it's good to have somebody on there that was detailed and worried about the wording and things like that. So I do appreciate Commissioner Shaw's work in that. Also, Adidas Foundation, I was just sitting there thinking, they always come through when, you know, when we need something down. Shout out to that committee and to that organization. It is, you know, really appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Aaron? He what?
No comments. Commissioner Shaw?
Well, I'd like to, I certainly appreciate the vision of Carrie, I guess she's already gone, for the swim program. And I wish you'd tell her that, Justin, because I think she put a lot of thought and consideration into, and detail into the progression of that program, and I certainly appreciate that. I'd like to indicate that this week I got a call from a Second Fox tribal member who had a great concern about the Bryan Street interchange, the DOT funding that had previously been set aside for that for a priority project, which was on Bryan Street. I spoke with the county commissioner, who also shares that concern. And I really wish that the city would take some type of action to look into how to, to see if there's any way to move or shift those funds rather than the city of Shawnee losing those because there will not be a agreement, or it's my understanding there will not be one on the Bryan Street interchange. So I'd certainly like to, again, indicate that to the city manager and to you as the city commissioners, that we still need those funds. We still need those placed somewhere here in the city of Shawnee. And regardless of whether it's on the Bryan Street interchange, we need them some more here.
My compliments to the commissioners that worked on the strategic plan, but also to Cindy for all of her work that she did in putting the budget together and making the numbers add up. I appreciate it. It made it a lot easier to look at.
Did they all add up, Ben?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I have to respond to Commissioner Shaw's comments. I'm told again and again and again by people up and down the line, and I'm talking about very high in state government, that if we don't do the Bryan Street exit, that those funds will disintegrate. They are not available to be moved. And I hope that gets to be the end of the story. The Bryan Street exit, in my opinion, is very important to Shawnee. It will give us two additional miles of economic development, which directly impacts the sales tax that we will receive, not probably in my tenure, but in someone's future tenure. And I understand the tribal concerns about the things that we've talked about. And I can tell you that I'm trying as hard as I can to open the lines of communication between us and them so that we can get this matter favorably resolved.
I would like to comment. Some of the meetings that we've had with the mid-sized cities coalition, and we've had the representatives and Senator Harz there, of course, others too, but Director Patterson's been there at least three times, and we have discussed that and what he's later is saying, what he's saying that the Highway Commission would have to reassign those. And he said that because of the length of the project, it'd be, you know, impossible to reallocate those funds. It's been on the what, planning area, what, this is the second goal, five-year goal, or anything.
Sir, it's on the eight-year ODOT plan.
Yeah, so anyhow, that's, I mean, if you have the director telling you it's not gonna happen, you know, it's transferring the money around, it's probably not gonna happen.
Thank you.
On a more positive note, I share the enthusiasm of the staff about the swimming pool and some of the things. And as I go to different meetings and interact with different staff, I intuitively feel enthusiasm up and down the line. And it certainly has nothing to do with the mayor, and some of the commissioners have been here longer than I have. Maybe it's attributable to them, but I attribute a lot of it to our city staff, to our city executives, city manager, and our city treasurer, that there's a really positive vibe that I get when I'm out in the community and trying to conduct city business and interacting with the staff. So kudos in that regard. Did anybody else have any other?
I'd just like to make a single statement on what you said, Mayor and Vice Mayor. I appreciate both of your comments in regard to the DOT and the prioritization that they have for their funds. And yes, I've spoke with Director Patterson before, and I've also spoke with the federal system. And there's two different opinions there, what the feds say versus what the state says and how those can be done.
Right.
And let me be clear, I do not speak for tribes, period. Tribes always speak for themselves. So that was a tribal member who came to me and just wanted to express his concern.
I think we're gonna continue to see problems growing on Harrison, with some development on the north side, certainly what we see on the south side. So I think leaving that problem would be very important to try to get Brian through. So I certainly hope we can.
Brian will do nothing but help to ease the problem on North Harrison.
Absolutely.
This, we need to recess this meeting and convene the Shawnee Airport Authority. Consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rutherford. Call a question. Motion carries seven oh. Item two, consideration of possible action regarding funding request to the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission.
Sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners.
This is a request, Commissioner Shaw requested of city staff to draft a letter. This is an official letter from the Airport Authority to the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission. Basically, what this does, if you recall, next fiscal year, we are getting funding for the engineering of a taxiway in Apron area, just the engineering design. The following fiscal year is when we want to construct. During that year, after all the funds, local funds and federal dollars come in, we're still gonna be short about $100, $150,000. We are looking to the city to help us fund that. Or this letter really is a request to the state to help us get future federal dollars, get those forwarded to us for fiscal year 2018 and 19, so we can alleviate the cost to the city and pretty much get two grants, two years of grants in one year to help us pay for. So this is just a letter requesting, can we do this? This isn't anything official. Once they do, if they do offer us this opportunity, then of course, we'll come back and get the commissioners to vote on it. So this is just a letter of support.
Is there a motion to approve the request?
First, I'd like to say thank you for doing the letter, and I would like to make the motion.
Commissioner Shaw moves we approve the request. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Harrod, second. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Consider a resolution accepting the grant agreement contingent on grant offer for Airport Improvement Program, AIP, project number 340-088-017-2017, from the Federal Aviation Administration at the Shawnee Regional Airport to design and engineer a taxiway... Aviation Administration at the Shawnee Regional Airport to design and engineer a taxiway apron area.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, like I said before, this next fiscal year, we're just doing the engineering design, so all this resolution is doing is allowing myself, the city manager, once we do receive that grant offer, we can go ahead and sign off and accept that on behalf of the city and the commission.
Is there a motion to accept?
I vote to accept.
Commissioner Gillum, second by Commissioner Bouchon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution accepting a grant offer from the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration, for the design of taxi lane construction, project number 3-40-0088-017-2017, for the Shawnee Regional Airport.
Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Is there any new business?
No, sir, there's not.
This meeting is adjourned, and the meeting of the Shawnee Municipal Authority is called to order. Would consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Gillum?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bouchon. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Is there any new business?
No, sir.
This meeting is adjourned, and the city commission meeting is reconvened. Item, consider executive session to discuss annual evaluations of the city manager and city treasurer pursuant to 25 OS 307B1, discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, disciplining, resignation of any individual, salaried public officer or employee. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
So moved.
Who was that?
Second.
Harrod, second by Commissioner Gillum. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. We shall return.
I can't dig it, I shouldn't ditch it out.
Well, you're everywhere I seem to go, so.
Wait, what?
You're everywhere I seem to go.
Well, I think you should get out, you know, take out the dollars.
I'll leave you aware here, you've been with us. Let me call. Parked down our street, down our road, ding-barked down at the bar, the red cord.
Item 18, consider matters discussed in executive session regarding discussion of annual evaluations of city manager and city treasurer pursuant to 25 OS 307B1, discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of any individual, salaried public officer or employee, and there will be no action on that item. We are adjourned.
So what we did there is coming around. Cindy?